Yes, because I'm special. Special. Special.
I'm special.
I'm special.
I'm special.
I was going to include that one today. First eight pictures here, I have no idea where it goes. This is not what was destined for us.
Did you know?
I did, and see some of the stuff that I moved. But as I said, it's hard for me to understand what's happening.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's a trigger day.
Please read them out, please.
Yeah.
Yes.
As a strategy, it's essential. It's important. So we suggest that we have a professional plan, have a legislature like that. We have a plan for how we're going to be having some control. Draws out kind of where we're going to run them.
Yeah.
So I think it's a plan for our environmental pressures.
Since she was on the kitchen chair.
She said the office.
My cap above her.
Yeah, just about.
Um, okay.
So that's a line I get approved.
Just do a review that.
Yeah. Yes. They're very popular in town. They're at Washington, but they have one.
Yeah, I should send that number.
That's a response.
Do you have that?
I don't even know.
By the reason of what you're doing.
Yes. No, it's better. We're actually back to the project. They're very nervous about the topic of how to handle this. It's just weird. And I've been thinking.
Well, that's an idea.
You're in all right.
These folks.
Yeah. I'm pleased to know. I'm glad. 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 I'm glad.
Good evening, welcome. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for July the 5th, 2022. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be aware, this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Before I ask for public comments, I just want to make a brief announcement. Unfortunately, we had some very sad news over the holiday weekend. Ray Harvison passed away. Ray was a dedicated member of the community here at West Goshen. He served here in township for, I believe, over 35 years. Although I did not know him personally, his commitment to public service and his work at the township, I know township as well, known by many residents and businesses, and he will remain. He was Public Works Director and a supervisor of township, and that kind of commitment and services, something that is admirable and should be recognized. I'm sure the board will find a way to do that at the appropriate time. So at this time, we just send our condolences to his family and wish them well in dealing with their loss. I know some of the board members have maybe known Ray better than me. If they want to add any comments, please feel free to do so. Is there any public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening? Any questions or issues? Nate?
Yeah, just a question. I see that there's a new sign going in at West Goshen Park. Is that going to be an electric sign, or is it that we're just replacing the old one?
It's going to be a digital display sign.
Thank you.
Any other questions or issues to be raised? Margie?
I just wanted to leave the meeting.
Is it related to an agenda item?
No, but I just, that's the first I've heard of Mr. Harvison's passing, and I just need a few moments to come to those places.
Okay, well, that's fine, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item then, which is item number four. Continued discussion regarding improvements to the intersection of New Street and Rosedale Avenue and possible approval of the first addendum to the Cooperation Memorandum for the Rosedale Avenue corridor. Chris, you want to just introduce the subject for the board?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is an update of the proposed improvements at the intersection of New Street and Rosedale Avenue, as well as a draft of a first addendum to the Cooperation Agreement for the Rosedale Avenue corridor. The board previously discussed this at the March 15th and April 5th meetings and reviewed the plans for the improvements at the April 5th meeting. Copies of the plans were included in the packet, and to the best of my knowledge, there have been no revisions to the plans that were previously reviewed. As part of this process, the Township, Westchester Borough and Westchester University have discussed an addendum to the Cooperation Memorandum, as the original document did not incorporate these improvements. We did receive revisions from the university's council, Brian Nagel. Document outlines that the university, through the foundation, would engage Carroll Engineering directly to do the design work associated with the project, as well as complete the final construction. Township Solicitor, on June 30th, the Township Solicitor Engineer, Westchester Borough Manager, and I met to discuss the addendum. However, based on this discussion, we don't believe that this agreement is in a format for approval at this time. It's my understanding that the borough wasn't consulted on this and has requested clarification as to certain improvements that were proposed on the one quadrant of the intersection closest to the dorms. And additionally, we're not really sure if this is necessary based on the restructuring of the agreement for design services. And if the board would, I'll let Ariel, Ariel Stock is from Buckley Bryan, elaborate a little bit further on that.
Sure. So Chris has basically summarized it, thank you, for the board. It really is just not in a position ready for action yet. The borough and the university need to coordinate on the design for the signals. As you may be aware, the borough owns those signals, and we need to approve the updates to them. The township is in kind of a position, we don't want to appear uncooperative, we do want to cooperate, but the Cooperation Agreement before you tonight is just not in a position that you can execute at this time. So I would recommend that the board let those design activities progress a little further, let alignment occur between the borough and the university, and then see where this agreement stands and whether it's necessary at that time to participate in it or not.
Okay, so I'm going to start with a couple of questions, and we'll see what the rest of the board has to say. So when I read the agreement, it seemed fairly straightforward. I mean, we've got several parties interested in the outcome of this project and making sure it goes smoothly, it's properly funded, that we get our setting in design, et cetera. When you say it's not, I understand it's not ready as in the borough has not had the chance to review the design at this point, preliminary design, and kind of accepted it's the direction they want to go. Assuming they have done that, would you be saying it's ready to go, or are there some other elements of this Cooperation Memorandum that you feel are, you know, not ready yet? And then with regard to the, do we really need one? Having heard me just say, well, I think it's good to have a basis for how this is all meant to go, is there a different approach that you would be proposing?
Well, no. Honestly, it would probably be something very similar to what's before you right now. The issue is the design, though. If the design's not finalized, there is no agreement. And until there is agreement on the design, it really is not productive to try and guess at what the final agreement would look like. Again, we're not trying to be uncooperative, it's just that the township is not in a position to make these kinds of decisions, strictly the borough's call.
It's the borough that's basically saying, kind of, working with the university for the borough's disagreeing a little bit with the plans with the university, is letting it out, is that right?
To be clear, I'm not certainly there is disagreement. It seems just that they want the opportunity to review it, they haven't been given that opportunity yet. At least that was the status last week when everyone sat down together.
One of the concerns that we discussed in our meeting was, there was, correct me if I'm wrong, there was, there were plans that were drawn up like in 2017, and these plans seem to deviate fairly considerably from those plans, is that correct?
Yeah, the earlier plans that didn't really have any significant improvements to the intersection, they were traffic signal plans generated for PennDOT, which really didn't show virtually any improvements in the intersection, so it's significantly different from what we have that we have now.
And since the jurisdictional boundary for the municipalities runs through the center of the intersection, however, pretty much all of the improvements are being located within the borough's jurisdictional boundaries, except for maybe the one, like the one signal on the southern side.
There's a Y name on that.
Kind of a little.
The southeast corner.
Yeah, but other than that, like the Warchow I or everything are going to be within the borough's territory.
Assuming they, the borough does get on board with the final designs being kind of improvement that's desired, was there going to be much change to this language then? I don't really see it. When I read through it, it seems all very much, hey, we've all agreed this is the way forward, and that, assuming they sign up on it, it would be pretty much this.
The framework's there. I think the final language will need to be wordsmith, but you have to take the framework's there.
Okay, I feel better now.
With this addendum, what I understand, the township will no longer be the middle person between the Westchester University and the foundation, and Carroll, and the construction contractors, who eventually will be hired to do this work, is that not the case? Is that true?
That's correct.
Then explain to me what, why do we even need this memorandum to agree to? Basically, we've been taken out of the picture, have we not, as a township?
Inasmuch as the township wouldn't have any practical obligations, you're correct. I think the township still wants to participate in the agreement and to control its terms, and part of this is occurring within the township. And while the township may not be contributing directly to the improvements or controlling them directly, I think that the township would want to assert some level of control over the improvements being installed within the township.
As far as being able to have an input to what these improvements could be and approve them before they go forward, well, that's going to be part of this agreement, is that what we're looking at?
Well, that's the idea, correct. But until there's alignment between the university and the borough of the signal design, it's hard for us to say whether you should approve this plan or not. We don't know what the final plan is going to look like, and that's why we're kind of at it in the past.
There's also been some requests from residents from the township to have some input to the final design. Has there been any response to that, do you know?
I'm not aware of it, no.
You know?
I forwarded all this to Carroll Engineering, and I did follow up with Jamie Graham last week, but I've not received a response.
I'd like to see some response from Carroll, you know, to the concerns of the residents from West Goshen Township as to what improvements should be in consideration.
Other questions from the board on the status of the Cooperation Agreement? All right, so we're going to continue to watch this space, and hopefully when the boroughs have a chance to review the design, we'll know where we stand with being able to execute the Cooperation Agreement. Thank you. Just to provide the opportunity, so any questions from the public relative to the conversation that just occurred? Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five. Discussion on possible approval of a proposal from Carroll Engineering for a study of the electrical system infrastructure operating for the West Goshen Township municipal complex. Chris, you have any one answer again, if you'd like to introduce it?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. For the board this evening is a proposal from Carroll Engineering to perform an evaluation of the electrical system for the municipal complex. We also have our facility superintendent here this evening might talk about answering questions the board may have. Completion of this evaluation was included in the 2022 budget. The project would involve an evaluation of the existing electrical system to determine what power is available for an increase in the number of electric vehicle charging stations, feasibility of installing solar power generation equipment on the roofs, and potentially converting the existing heating to electric units, preparing a plan for the existing electrical system, including modifications that may be necessary in preparation for a final report. The proposal outlined is $17,900, however, it's important to note that in the budget, the project is allocated for $12,300. However, if the board is comfortable with the price proposed and desires to proceed forward with the project, the funds are available to cover the additional costs. The proposal was reviewed by the Sustainability Advisory Committee at their meeting on June 28th, who did, they did recommend approval of the proposal, but they did note two items which I have gotten clarification on. The first was, the proposal outlines an evaluation of the HVAC system to determine the feasibility of converting the units to electric. The SAC wanted to ensure that this was considered the entire electrical demand for building heating. Speaking with Chris Peterson at Carroll Engineering, the entire electrical demand will be considered as part of the evaluation. They also wanted, the SAC also asked to look at, as part of the solar feasibility study, if that included an analysis for structural support for a solar array. We did contact solar renewable energy to obtain clarification, and that was not part of the proposal. My discussions with Mr. Peterson, we think it would be better, more beneficial to determine if solar is actually a viable option, and then receive an updated proposal for a structural analysis to determine the weight load. And then finally, the SAC recommended this be approved as a not-to-exceed amount, since the proposal says total estimated fee for services. So that is, that is the gist of what was for the board this evening.
Thanks, Chris. Does the board have questions on the proposal?
Yeah, I have a few questions, Chris. I'm sorry, I, first time I had a chance to look at Carroll's proposal today, and in a way, I'm not speaking on, so. Just for some clarification, with item number one, when you perform the site visit to determine, to investigate the existing electrical system, will they be performing a load calculation on the existing service, given three factors? Number one, the current demand. Secondly, the additional demand from the 55 electrical vehicles, charging stations that are being considered here. And then finally, and the third aspect would be additional load calculation if the HVAC system was converted over to all electric, basically the heat pumps. So would that be part of the onsite visit and the reports that will be generated as a result of that? Basically, what I'm trying to get at is, we have this existing breakdown, we have the service, we also have electric panels in place, will we need an upgrade on the electrical service from PECO in order to service these additional demands that are being considered by the board? So I think that's something that needs to be part of their, the scope of their service. On item number two, they talk about, and this was addressed by the Sustainability Advisory Committee, just to elaborate a little bit further, basically, we're looking at the, all the heating to be converted over to heat pumps, not some, but all. So that's what I think they will, will be looking for them to give us an idea what that would entail. On item number three, a list of the electrical loads will be developed. I presume that means a list of the current electrical loads, or are they going to consider the other two scenarios that I had already mentioned? And that is the additional demand from the 55 electrical vehicle charging stations, and then also from the HVAC conversion all over the heat pump. So I just want to have a notification of what item number three entails. Item four, a plan for the existing system, does that mean they're going to develop a single line for what we have now? I would presume that's what that would mean, what that would involve. And then item number five, a plan will be prepared for the conceptual electrical system modifications, which will include sketches with proposed equipment layout, demolition, and single line diaries. And again, that should be for, for the different scenarios that were considered. That is what we have now currently. Secondly, what it would mean if we had just electrical charging stations installed, and then the third scenario would be with the electrical stations being installed, and also with the full conversion over to heat pumps. And then I guess the fourth scenario there would be the addition of solar panels, that that would be included in the design of the overall electrical system here with the township. So there's quite a few scenarios there, which the board should have broken out for their consideration as part of this overall oversight that's being proposed by Carroll Engineering. Also, item number seven, we talk about coordinating with PECO regarding the availability of renewable energy credit sales for solar power production, that's not used on site. I would also add there, if they could provide possible grant funding opportunities for electrical vehicle charging stations, as well as HVAC conversion over to heat pumps as well, that may be appropriate to go in number seven, or they can include it in item number nine as part of the overall report that they will be generating here. So there's a few of the ideas that I, I thought, I'm sorry, like I said, and they got this today, Russell sent this to you, you know, in an email that you could run it past Chris to see what their response would be, but I'll deal with your.
Thanks, yeah.
Is there one I'll send it to tomorrow or email?
Oh, that would be, that would be perfect.
Okay.
That would be helpful. I do, I think in terms of, in terms of looking at the existing, and again, I'll get clarification from Chris Peterson, but in terms of looking at, you know, item numbers one and two related to the exist, to your questions about like the existing system and the load counts to be done, I think they will be, and I see Mike nodding his head, just because the report's going to discuss the existing electrical system and the improvements that would be needed to accommodate the additional charging stations, the valuation of the generator sizing and utility service, solar feasibility, and the conversion of facility heating. So just looking at that on face value, I think that would be part of that report that's going to be generated at the end of this, but I can't say that at the time.
Yeah, I'll write it all out, Nick, and say yay or nay to it. I'm not looking to add to the cost of this, but once we get a product from that, then we'll be able to make an intelligent decision about how to go forward, and how quickly we go forward, and how we can fund it and go.
Other board questions or comments?
A comment and a question. My comment is I agree with unfolding off on the infrastructure, because I do think you just see if solar is actually viable, or we're looking at installing more brands, that's a good way forward. My question is, I just can't recall when we decided on 55 stations.
That's a good question, that was one of my questions too. So I know, you know, one of the SAC members have done a thorough analysis of potential conversion of light vehicles over to, you know, electric vehicles, as well as some of the heavy duty vehicles. It was pretty comprehensive. We know that some of the heavy duty vehicles is really no solution today, but perhaps will be in the future, but 55, it would be good to know what the base is supposed to be.
Mike, do you know the base was supposed for that?
Yeah.
Just don't remember.
I don't, I don't remember that.
Yeah. I'd like to know if it's all the light vehicles that we currently have, plus some?
Twenty-five per administration, it seems like a lot.
Twenty for the blade.
It's split between administration and public works.
Yeah, that's how they figure everything.
There's some parity on the, where the 55, and we came from, was the split between different heavy duty expectations, vehicles, and they all. I had a couple of other questions, I totally blew John around, scared a little bit more paranoid than Chris, and I expect that that will be yes for many of them, and we'll be good shape relative to the scope. I just want, can you confirm that this is something they're going to use Keystone Engineering Group to do?
That's correct.
Okay. Because they're a part of COW relative to these electrical design pieces of work. One suggestion, which I think would be an added to the scope, but maybe they can incorporate it with what they've currently proposed, in terms of a price at least, it probably falls under number seven, which is, I would like to see as an alternative to, if we do end up with onsite solar generation, that in addition to potentially, maybe if it's not used onsite, we can return to the grid and the option, what it would look like, we can not detail calculations, but it's an option to having a battery on the side that we can charge with excess production, and drain it for only uses over time. So it's really a, or storing power on the side, define the advantages to it. Where would it be located, and what kind of rough size would it fit into an overall electrical scheme? Because I don't believe in the long term, that the current generous, I'm not even sure we would get qualified for the municipalities and the generous credit you get for putting power back to the grid would be available to the township, so it might be used to use all power generated for our uses.
Okay, I can check on, I can check with Chris on that one.
Yeah.
I think all the comments that we have, we should probably summarize them to the SAC to, to their whereabouts brought up tonight, and maybe not think that as an addition.
So then?
Just like we summarized here, what the SAC did, I think everything we did tonight, starts with questions, in addition to these.
Thank you.
Yeah, just keep them on.
So having said all that, having all these questions, I mean, some answers to, I just want to test the board, are we still in a position to be able to, if we so decide, to approve the proceeding with this, on both the recommendation of not to exceed number, and an expectation that most of these questions will be affirmative relative to the scope of work that COW has proposed? Would we want to wait?
I would always, I would recommend to the board waiting and getting answers to the questions, but we're active.
We'll have a meeting in two weeks.
Sound good?
Sean?
Yes?
May I ask for clarification, please? The way I'm reading this, it looks like there's two separate proposals here. They're dated two different dates, and they are each total 17,900 for two different engineering scope of work.
Are you looking at what was on the website?
I'm looking, yeah, what's on our website. One's dated.
June 13.
And the other one's July 5th, and one is specifically for the study of the electrical system upgrades for the township municipal complex, but the other one is specifically for electric vehicles, charging stations.
Have a answer to that, Chris, do you know what was posted? I only have the June 13 one.
That was Val. I think the second one was the initial one we did.
What was it, was it the EV one?
You and I were talking at the beginning, and then we wanted to deliver the full picture. So I think that's why they did the second one, because they already did the first one, which is geared towards electrical. And then I think the second one was more geared towards what we asked for. So rather than, they should probably define them, but.
Let me just check. Maybe I went one. I might have just added something in error.
The second one proposal is specifically for West Goshen Township at electrical vehicle charging stations.
Yes, definitely did it, Sean and I wanted to expand.
The one we're actually reviewing, it's actually mine, and the board package is dated June 13, which includes the list of John was walking through in terms of scope of services.
Okay, and there's another one dated July 5th. Oh, no, that's Chris's memo.
That's my memo. No, there are not two proposals.
Oh, that's what it is. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are not two proposals.
Very good.
That was my government.
I have one more question, Chris, relative to the budget number. I can get how, I know Dave did his best job, he gone with kind of a ballpark, what this was going to cost, is that my recollection, is that correct, to how we had initial budget estimate for this proposal?
I believe so, yes.
Does that just put forward some information, let me get to the.
I'd also be asking, I mean, asking the engineering firm questions, I would also ask if there's any additional costs associated with their responses, because that will impact the total amount here, is there may be no costs. the total amount here, is there may be no costs associated with their questions, but we should at least ask that.
When you say with their responses, do you mean when I email Chris and ask him for their questions and then get a response back from them?
Yes.
There will...
Any additional costs because of what we're asking.
Well, some of the clarification questions, a lot of them are clarifications, that does this mean that? And the answer is, yes, it means that, there should be no additional costs. If they say, Sean's requesting a battery, look at the battery, that is not in our scope, so we're going to charge a thousand dollars for it.
Okay, that's okay, I understand.
So there's extras potentially to the...
And just one, one more discussion point on this, where, I'm sure Ashley's concerned as well, and it's what jumped out at me when I first read, read this, is the township has indicated that it wishes to accommodate approximately 55 stations, I think we need to find out where that came from, how was that communicated and indicated to Carol Engineering? Somebody told them that, how, who had the...
Well, I mean, we did ask Dave, would we take the lead on that, maybe somebody, Dave and his staff, Mike behind us there, maybe they talked through the current view as to what the best likelihood is of the number of vehicles that could be electrified, but we just, we asked for that clarification.
Okay.
Any other comments? Thank you, Molly. Okay, so we'll revisit this at the meeting in two weeks, when we have the last responses, we'll be able to determine course of action.
Yes.
Thanks, Chris. Next on the agenda is item number six, discussion and possible approval of updates to the fee schedule for West Coast Township.
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening, is an update to the fee schedule for, for the township. Township fee schedule outlines costs for items such as permit fees, applications for hearing, subdivision and development applications, and fees for services. So as part of this update, the following fees are being posted for revision, there are three items. First item are the certification fees for things such as trash sewer tax certifications, which is currently five dollars per property. The fee schedule recommends that this be increased to twenty dollars. These fees are paid primarily by mortgage companies during the sale or refinance of a property, in order to determine if the associated costs have been paid to the municipality in advance of settlement. Reviewing this cost, I did query the managers consortium, and the range for that study came back to between ten dollars and thirty dollars. So this would put us in the middle of that range. Second item are related to professional service fees, there, I added language to section, section six, that outlined that the fees incurred by, incurred by municipal professionals in conjunction with the review of their application are billable to the applicant at the current rate incurred by the municipality. This is already outlined in both the municipality's planning code and in the township subdivision and land development ordinance, however, would be beneficial to document this in our fee schedule as well. And then finally, the last change is just an update from approvals that were previously done by the board for our trash and recycling and sewer fees, which were both approved by resolution twenty-two, that, resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two-one for the trash recycling fees and sewer fees that were approved through the adoption of ordinance number one dash twenty-two-two. And this is simply transferring the amounts that were approved through those items to the township's fee schedule.
Thanks, Chris. For item number two, the professional service fees, language has been added, did you include that in the board package, or did you just include the fee schedule and the language is elsewhere within the descriptions? I don't see any language relative to section six.
That's in, section six is section number four subdivision and land development fees, so under number eight, it says township appointed professional services, don't let the current hourly rate on a monthly basis.
That's definitely in the language.
Correct.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments, on what Chris has just gone through?
Just a quick question, Chris, on the tax certifications, can you give a estimation of how long staff has to spend each one of those certifications?
Not very, not very long.
Twenty minutes, half an hour?
Maybe, but we get a large volume, we do get a decent volume of them, of turnover.
Which is comparable to what their major benefit rate would be anyways.
Correct.
It costs the township that much money, if not more, to generate a certification for a mortgage company, so it's certainly warranted to increase it to that amount.
Are you thinking of a higher amount, John?
Well, I, we're in the mid-range here, I think, you know, going from five to twenty would be some of the appropriate addition.
Other questions for Chris? Chris, I noticed a couple of things on the format, it looks like on some of the formatting, the, the fees slipped down relative to where the descriptors are, so they're out of alignment with a couple of the...
I tried my best to clean it up, unfortunately, I had to convert a PDF to Word, so it didn't convert as cleanly as I would like, but I will clean that up afterwards.
I think it was published, just to make sure it's kind of clear which ones were intended. One other question, the Westchester area cardboard of appeals, is that something that's ever utilized?
Almost like it hasn't been utilized in a while.
We've used it twice.
Twice in your term here, written, twenty years?
Pretty much.
That's something we're part of.
Any other questions, any other questions from the board? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt the proposed West Coast Township fee schedule effective from today, so I'd like to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll see you.
Thank you, Tina, thank you, John. Any final board questions or comments on the motion for the fee schedule? Any public comments or questions on the motion?
Certification on the professional fees, just because they currently are, they weren't beforehand in our code, doesn't mean we weren't charging for them.
That statement's incorrect.
Well, I'm asking, I'm just asking for verification, we have been charging.
I can't speak to what happened in the past.
Right. I'm just curious, and maybe I'll ask again when we get to the bills to be paid, but there's a lot of payments that come out of our general fund to Carol Engineering, say, I'm looking at the bills to be paid for professional services for Woodlands at Greystone. I imagine that should be then charged back to the escrow fund for...
Woodlands at Greystone is set up separately from this, they have their own dedicated escrow agreement that's funded, and we bill them on a monthly basis.
Yeah, that's, that's my point, I always see on bills to be paid, Carol Engineering for these fees, that, to my knowledge, I always thought they should be coming out of...
We do, we write, they get a, there's a separate checking account for Woodlands, and we bill them every month, I write a letter that says this is how much, and our staff account writes a check directly from that account to pay those bills.
Okay.
You see the invoices, but you don't see the, we don't, we don't put it on treasures report, the escrow account for Woodlands, the payments being made out of that.
Okay. I thought all the bills to be paid were coming out of our, our general fund.
And any bills, any bills, because we only have, I think, like three active land development projects right now that are being, that are reaching the point of being billable every month, Jamie does bills on all those developers, as soon as they're paid, there's, as soon as we get them, they're separated out and Jamie handles the billing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion, ready to take the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Motion passes five zero, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number seven, discussion of proposed amendments to chapter sixty-one on plastic bag, plastic straw ordinance, the West Coast Township Code of Ordinances, sorry. So Chris, would you like to introduce this one again?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, for the board this evening are proposed amendments to chapter sixty-one of our Code of Ordinances. This section does outline the prohibition of plastic bags and straws by defined commercial establishments in the township, which were adopted on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one through ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two-one. Generally speaking, since enforcement began on April twenty-second, the vast majority of businesses have been found to be complying, we have had to issue certain initial warnings to a few, to a few businesses, but have not had to go any further at this point. However, we have run into a couple of what I'll call language issues that should be clarified, that should be clarified in order to get the maximum benefit possible. The first one are under definitions for compliant bag and single-use plastic bag. Particularly in the definition of single-use plastic bag, it states that, in the second sentence, the term does not include bags intentionally designed for reuse or product packaging. What we've discovered recently is the, there will be purchases of thicker bags that are manufactured through the blow film extrusion process that our ordinance specifically prohibits, however, they are marketed as reusable up to, I think the one I saw was a hundred and twenty-five pounds. So this presents an issue, in my opinion, from an enforcement standpoint, where if we were to enforce against it, even though it's manufactured through a process we do not accept, it is reusable, so I could see it not being, I could see enforcement doing extremely difficult.
It looks like.
Um, I don't want to identify anybody, um, but yes, we have had one that's found that, so my recommendation with this regard is to...
For...
I just don't want to call on the single anybody, but the, my recommendation is, under the definitions of compliant bag and single-use plastic bag, we, in order to address this, we prohibit anything manufactured through the blow film extrusion process, so that eliminates the use of those bags. And Jamie can tell you, when I found out about this, I spent like an hour on a Friday researching this to try and figure out if it was compliant or not. And that would still allow for those, like more of those woven plastic reusable bags to be okay, but the ones manufactured through the process, it would get them, get away from them. The second area I have would be under enforcement, so right now, section sixty-one-six outlines enforcement proceedings, it's fairly open-ended, so we've been going with the standard, you get a notice, you have thirty days in which to comply. So like, for example, under, if you get an enforcement notice presumed, and you have thirty days in which to file an appeal. I'm recommending that section sixty-one-six dot C, which says that any commercial establishment that receives an initial written warning may file a request for an exemption pursuant to the procedures in the ordinance, and we add a sentence there that says, a request for an exemption must be filed within fifteen days of the date of your initial written warning notice. That will then give us a time clock to go off, and if they don't file that appeal within fifteen days of the notice, then we can go to enhancing enforcement.
That would be consistent with your current policy you have for...
It would be consistent with our property maintenance code. Because I, I think in this regard, I think fifteen days is adequate.
So if a business owner's away ten days, then there's no one there to respond to that, we can, fifteen days?
Follow up with them?
We've been following up with people in between, we actually went, when we first started this, we actually went and handed over to notice because of the unreliability of the post office, just to make sure they had it. So I, I think that, I think fifteen days is adequate.
Unless we put language in there, have they altered, under certain circumstances, sort of, or already, you know, as you were...
And you would think with, with most, I would think with most businesses, there might be, there would be a way in which to, that they wouldn't like really close up shop for ten days, they would probably have someone there who's still like accepting mail, and we do have some email addresses, so we have been sending some via email as well, and with, after the mail, so I think fifteen days is adequate.
So it's based on the property maintenance violations, right?
Correct.
What's our experience with providing fifteen days notice to correct that, and people saying, you know, how many times do we have a problem, and they're just not able to respond within that time, because, for whatever reason, is it...
That depends, in a case like these cases, it depends on what they issue it, if it's cutting your grass, you have fifteen days to do it, it's typically that gets done. If it's something a little bit more involved, then they, they call and talk to me, it's the zoning officer, and we work through when that can get scheduled, and, and understanding just what the times are right now, and the lead time on something.
I think it can, I think it can also, there could be some discretion, that would be utilized, for example, if, if we issue a notice to a business owner and they contact us and they say, okay, I've stopped using plastic bags, but I'm not going to be able to get into compliance in fifteen days, it's going to take me thirty days just because of shipping issues, we can work with them accordingly before we find them, or before we go down the path of that.
If you're working something out that not even realize it...
Yeah, I was, you know, fifteen days to understand that they have a problem.
I would just add, from the perspective of enforcement, our magistrate district judges are, are pretty insistent on reasonableness standard for these sorts of enforcement actions, where if someone was not present, if they were out of the country or something like that, and they came to explain it to the MDJ, that that was the situation, I would expect there to be leniency granted, and frankly, from that perspective, we probably wouldn't want to rush to enforce it, if there was that issue hanging out there, we'd give them that quick time to make any corrective actions before we begin, before a judge.
The goal, yeah, the, the goal is always compliance, not getting people's money.
So what are the thoughts of the board, do you come with fifteen days as proposed, or do you suggest a longer period?
I'd say, I'd like fifteen, I think it's only going to really apply to new businesses that come in the township, because the majority of eighty-five of them are already on the program and are complying with the program, so it's very few are going to have a career. I think in West Coast Township, it's going to apply to where it's not going to be unmanageable because of that, so it's likely, I think we keep it fifteen days.
I'll go for, just to kind of address that, I went to some establishment today, who was previously compliant and now is not compliant again. So I actually think that we need to be mindful that they may have passed the first round of conception, and now, like, you know, if they had all the hope, yeah, it can be like a little...
Could you, you like fifteen days as a way to keep process, some urgency in it?
Yes.
Other thoughts, John, probably?
I just, I think you may have touched on it already, Tina, what is the percentage of compliance now? You said eighty-five percent, or eighty-five businesses have complied?
A hundred percent compliant, well, as we know, when we did our inspections, let's put it that way.
Last round, yeah.
Yes, because they weren't necessarily a hundred percent when we did our inspections, but Chris sent out notices shortly after our inspection notifying of non-compliance, and they came into compliance at that time right away.
So can you give a estimation of what level of compliance do we have now in the township with the plastic bag and straw man?
Before actual statement, we were a hundred percent compliant, I would say.
I think, I think we're about ninety percent.
Ninety, okay.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent, okay. So you call that a very small number of businesses.
Right, very small.
Because the initial, the initial list that, that we had developed, when we started sending out notices, we did get a few back, so we did, we'll let down a little bit just because some closed or changed location.
But at this point, after, it's been a couple of months now, in Nansville, in fact, we're at nine percent compliance.
Majority of them want to do the right thing, they want to be compliant.
Yeah, you want people to, to buy into this, we don't want to be around there at the hour.
That's not the intention.
Exactly. And then this happening all over, I'm telling you, you're running Jersey, the whole state.
East town.
Down the shore, it's hard to find places to bag any more, I'm telling you.
It sounds like you, you come with fifteen days.
Yeah.
Can we just go back to the first point? So are you suggesting we amend the ordinance with, under definitions, some language that says something along the lines of, plastic bags made by the blow film extrusion process are considered a single-use and not a compliant bag?
Something type of, yeah, so you're going to have, like, to use the particular language to close this concern?
Yeah, I feel like if we tell you like what we need, you'll be able to put it in.
That's exactly what we need.
Yeah, yes.
The other thing I would ask for from the Sustainability Advisory Council, I'm sure that they've already collected information about the blow film process, it would be helpful to insert some of that into the background paragraphs of the amending ordinance, in case anyone ever decides to challenge the ordinance and, and wonder why you banned this specific type of bag, it would be helpful to have a little bit of regulatory language in the, in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's great that.
I'll email, I'll email Melanie Violet tomorrow, I'm sure she has that information.
That's great, great. Cover from her, I think that would be more resourceful.
So Chris, is there some specific action you need from the board tonight, or is it just a agreement with the proposed changes you had, or you bring back a specific...
I don't think there's anything specifically required, or it's almost authorized to proceed, but...
So what I, what I heard was fifteen days is good, and yes, to providing language that addresses this potential use of a blow filled extrusion bag, a compliant bag, we don't want that, with language that prohibits that.
And I don't know what your office's workload is, but I'm kind of, just because of the advertising requirements, I think a good... Just because of the advertising requirements, I think we could draft this advertising report on the nineteenth, but...
Sure.
Do we need to incorporate, from a legal perspective, do we need to incorporate an effective date to this amendment of the ordinance?
It would be effective five days after adoption.
By default, yeah, it would be effective five days after adoption. If the board wanted to impose a longer period of time to permit advertising or communication around it, that would be fine. There's no downside to doing that, really. You know, a thirty-day, effective thirty days is customary in other locations. But you could do as quickly as five days if you were concerned about the immediacy of it.
I think thirty days is a good suggestion. One other point on this is the... Usually we try to group several minor items, updates together into one advertisement, keep it fast down. If there's anything else you have pending that we would kind of do in common with this particular set of updates?
We could look at it. The other thing we can do is we can tailor the advertisement to literally use as few words as possible. This isn't a very complicated amendment, and we may be able to do that as well. But we can check with Chris to see what else is coming sort of down the line.
I don't have anything off the top of my head.
So do we need to decide tonight what that effective timeframe is to be able... Were you to be able to draft that? Or is that a discussion we have at the July, at the end of July meeting?
Well, if you are able to come to an consensus tonight, then we can draft it that way and advertise it that way for your enactment. But if you prefer to wait, you can...
Are you guys ready to make that decision tonight?
Yeah, I'm sure we can make the decision tonight. I think my personal view is we're getting about this reasonable standard. But as I said, you think you're going to time and you picked on me or whatever else. You know, thirty days is a generous approach. It's not going to be the end of the world if it takes thirty days, but it'd be good to get in compliance and plan with thirty days. That's my view.
Yeah, I think this change only applies to the areas small. So I think it would be customary to give them at least enough time to figure it out. So I think thirty days is appropriate.
Plus, they have to get rid of their busy inventory thing. They have a big inventory.
They could be compliant start because they have a solution. They operate in spaces that already have this trend, so they can help that.
The larger chains do.
But I agree with thirty days.
John, are you okay with thirty days? I think the direction of the board is thirty days.
Heard it.
With approval for adoption. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Okay, now we're on to... Just... Was there any public comment on that process we just went through? Okay, so now on to agenda item number eight. Discussion regarding potential development of contractual arrangement for the funding of fire and EMS services for West Goshen Township. This one, how the board downsized, I'll introduce it through Chris's memo. Over the past few months, staff and board members from the township have been engaging in dialogue with members of the communities, emergency service providers, to understand the operations and concerns within their respective agencies. This has included individual meetings at the facilities and formation of a fire EMS coalition that has held its first meeting in May. Additionally, supervisors John Hellman and Tina Smith and Chris met with representatives from the Pennsylvania Fire and Emergency Services Institute to gain a better understanding on the situations surrounding the services and the appropriate questions to ask of our providers to get a better understanding. Most recently, members of the board attended a meeting at Good Fellowship Ambulance Company, which was attended by other municipality representatives in their service territory. And I didn't know was discussed was the potential of arranging a contractual relationship for funding purposes. The township is currently part of a breach on contract for service for the service area for Westchester Fire Department. The contract runs through the end of 2023. If the township were to pursue this same type of relationship with the other fire and EMS service providers, an appropriate funding formula would need to be developed. It may be best to work through this. Work this through the Fire and EMS Coalition, as funding is an important part of those discussions. So that's the background. I personally attended, together with Tina and John, session at Good Fellowship Ambulance Company a week, two ago. And having listened to the situation around the whole provision of EMS services as well as fires, it's the same general situation. And the pressures on these organizations, in my personal opinion, some kind of sustainable, clear funding mechanism would be appropriate for all parties. But the townships have benefited from the services and the clarity and necessity of the organizations to have a clear view of their funding sources. So I am of the belief that a contractual arrangement, just like we have with Westchester Fire Company, would be appropriate for Good Fellowship Ambulance starting in 2023. Now, and since this is a holistic approach that needs to be drafted, hence the whole idea of the coalition, I would also suggest that Goshen Fire, we would have similar contractual arrangements, perhaps two separate contracts, one for EMS services and one for the fire service. As a way forward, this would at least allow us to have a clear, visible, committed contractual relationship to the funding of these organizations and allow appropriate mechanisms and processes to work with these providers to gain the most efficient way of providing their services to the residents and businesses of West Goshen and other municipalities. So that's my opinion. The board wants to share your thoughts from what you've learned on the recent months on this journey. I think that'll be good.
Yeah, I'd like to just add a few things. In our first coalition meeting, we did briefly address this topic with the EMS and fire in West Goshen. And we also have a follow-up to discuss it at our next meeting on the fourteen. So I'd like to get everybody's opinion on it, too, also, from... You guys have to live with it, also. So we're going to make sure we're on the same page with that. John could talk further. Since then, John and I have been doing a lot of research on different formulas and things that are working and not working, and trying to educate ourselves on the entire contractual agreement. How should we structure it, and some of the good things people find and the bad things. And, you know, just trying to get a little bit more of a background to present to the coalition, our next coalition meeting. So, you know, I think it's a good idea. This way, everybody knows what's in the budget for the next three or five years, depending on how long the contract is. There is language in existing as an example in the borough's contract that does allow for changes that may occur during the year that nobody anticipated that would increase the cost. But obviously, there's a process for that. It would have to be approvals and go through a lot of hoops to be able to get those approvals. But it gives everybody an idea, a strong idea, from a budgeting standpoint, what they have, what they expect on both sides. So, you know, I think it has been working in the borough for a long time, maybe twenty years or so. And it seems to be working, so it's proved it's worked, at least in that discipline. So my question.
I have a question for you, Tina, and John might answer. So I know when we met at first with those representatives in this town, which is an area... Where we got an idea about the fire EMS coalition. Did they say, whether they adopted contractual relationships with their fire providers to build that, or they approved of any...
That's a good question. Do you recall that, John, what we called?
No, I don't recall. I'm getting answered that. I can't answer that. Well, we have another meeting scheduled with the coalition on July fourteenth. And at that meeting, Tina put together an agenda, and we're going to be asking for in the mid-year budget review from the three entities that were involved in this coalition. First, Westchester Fire, Good Fellowship, as well as Goshen Fire. We're also going to be asking for the call item, provided for West Goshen meets one of those three providers. And also the voluntary contributions from other municipalities for the last three years from all of those three entities. So we're going to have an idea of what our equity would be as far as fair payment from us from the township to each one of these three fire and EMS providers. So we'll have to bring it back to the board for consideration.
Because Andrea, you sort of offer this variables within whatever formulas.
Oh, yeah, Andrea's been involved from the beginning. She will continue to be involved remotely. She's been involved, even in the last, she was involved remotely. She will be at this one, oh, yeah, I believe, even for now. All the professionals, including Andrea.
Because, you know, the way it's worked at like now, for one fire provider, you know, we have a set amount, we know what it's going to be. So every year, the budget process comes up, we know what that's going to be. But for the other two, Good Fellowship and East Goshen, we don't know. You know, they come up with these requests every year, and then we have to work with it. And the problem is, in the past couple of years, it's been increasing double. So we have to do something to try to, for both the providers and also for us as the township, come up with some kind of sustainable and equitable and fair arrangement. And we're thinking this contractual arrangement would be the way to go, based upon call line.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify that there's costiness, or doesn't mean they're unreasonable. I mean, it's just we need to work through, everybody knows what they are. Do you have any comments?
Any comments?
I have one more comment before we go ahead. Our public speaker. I think the... I think, yeah, the way... First of all, I went to the meeting. I went to Good Fellowship. There was representatives from the borough. East Bradford.
East Town.
No, East Town, East Bradford, and it was one of the...
West Town.
West Town. And, you know, one was a township manager, the others were elected representatives. And all of the... All the general consensus was this is a good way to go forward. So I think there's a kind of... If we put some energy and some interest in moving this into kind of what would a contract look like, I think the other townships would look to say, how do we become part of this process? Versus, oh, that's great, they'll have a contract, I can get away with paying less. I didn't sense anything other than having to work together to try to make this a right way forward and have that conversation, which is good. Just one comment for myself on the funding mechanism. I do think there's two... I mean, irrespective of how the cost picture is going to turn, that's part of the whole conversation. But in terms of the funding, the two key principles to me is, one is there's a fixed cost component to having a service provision available to you. And there's a... Whatever percent of the total cost is, I don't know. But there is a... If nobody ever called, you have to have a cost associated with having a service available on standby. Just as your sewer connection, if nobody flushed anything down the sewer, you've got the connection available if you do. And that, to me, should be related to a proportion divided with the cost between the number of residents or including business employees or whatever else. There's some factor associated with the population of a particular municipality. And then there's the other big chunk of the cost, which is probably the majority of the cost to me, which is the call volume related component, variable costs of having. What demand is your township putting on the service provider? And you should pay a proportional share of your demand as part of that variable cost. So there's two pieces to me, is we develop an appropriate contractual formula for the funding. And, you know, I don't think it's rocket science. I think it's all doable. I have some issues with the current Westchester Fire contract and how that's structured, but that doesn't mean that there's many good things in there that we could use as a starting point. So to me, the best next step is to take the, hopefully, conclusion of this board, this is the direction we want to forward it into the coalition meeting against the aforementioned there. But then the act will be on this board to authorize spending some staff exhaust time and costly legal costs to come up with a draft contract to provide to the EMS and fire companies, say, this is what we're thinking, and start that process along. The goal would be to get it done, so it's part of the twenty-three-year budget decision process.
I just want to add to the board for clarification that this will be one contract that incorporates the municipalities that they serve. So it's not going to be the contract just with West Goshen. We, at least, are proposing, you know, you have ten municipalities, Beryl has six, and Goshen has five, and we, the municipalities they serve. So we'd be working in a room, getting a room, and work with all the municipalities together to create one contract.
Ten signatures to say that you're all entering into this contract?
That's the goal. That's the goal.
So I agree, that is the ideal situation. Realistically, if we get the four or five big elephants to sign up with the same contract, we're going to address ninety-five percent of the call volume. And then we can decide what ways we can put pressure on those who want to have service and no cost with our multiple providers, as to how we say, no, you don't get free service just because we eventually do a funding mechanism towards the organization. So try to cross one bridge at a time. And the main goal is to get the big municipalities here agreeing a contractual relationship and agree what that looks like, give a little bit of color this year, so.
Okay, that's the goal.
So Kim, can I ask you one of the other comments?
You did great. The good news about Good Fellowship's formula, we've used the same one for the last three or four years of our acts. Basically, it encompasses everything you're looking for in Trump. So we believe the same thing should be based on population and then consumption, which is the call line. Anything else? We don't really want to factor it, put on you. It's really the cost of readiness, and then how often is the township called? So usually, that's where there's the most friction, when this first comes up. And the majority of the townships that we serve, the ten, we are the biggest fish. The majority of you have the same, like, minded response about this. So this is one of the most optimistic feelings, I think, we've had in a long time, that I think collectively, we can do something together, so. And it's the goal, really, for me, and I've been saying this to you guys for years, is the transparency forward to the residents. And then you see what we need and you understand. And so when it comes time to talk about this stuff, everybody's on the same page and we're ahead of the game.
Do you anticipate any negative feedback from so many municipalities on this contract that would not want to participate out of the ten that you're aware of?
No, I mean, there's one or two that are still kind of lagging behind. And it's one of those things, like, this is going to force the hand one way or another. EMS is just at a point where we can't do it on insurance reimbursement. We've been there for a while, and we can encompass it in different ways. You guys referenced the Westchester Fire Department contract, and it's locked in for five years. The best thing that you don't have to battle there is labor. And for us in Goshen, labor is the one that is skyrocketing expense that we just can't cap or can't get on top of. So, you know, that makes us completely different than Westchester Fire. I love your approach on this, that you're taking each company individually, because you have three different horses that are serving for you. So you've really got to take a look at that, and you really have to separate fire and EMS, as Sean is so frequent in saying this, doing, because we do each other different things. So you guys have been coordinating it, and we really appreciate your time, the energy you're putting into this, especially the effort, because all three entities, we're at a point where we're here.
I will say that's something, at least I learned in the coalition, is that it is three different entities. EMS and fire. So, you know, we're learning something every time, so it's good.
You could spend years sitting here and go, you learn something new every time.
Exactly.
No, I appreciate it. Appreciate it very much.
Thanks for your input. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from the board? So just to summarize then, so we're going to have a coalition, understandably. Tina and John, you're going to present the coalition, the way we propose to go forward this in West Goshen. You are going to introduce the concept of Goshen Fire, and we'll look at the similar contractual arrangements with two separate services, EMS and then fire.
Yeah, I think that's going to be important to do that. We need to separate that out of the Goshen.
And that'll maybe a lot more work for them versus a sole provider of service, whether it's EMS or fires. And maybe have a frank discussion how they can do that, what issues it raises for them. But that would be introduced to the coalition. Then bring that... That's before the next board meeting, right? Then bring that feedback to the next board meeting. We're too in position to authorize, so we spend some resource on developing an appropriate contract, at least initially with Good Fellowship.
Yeah, I will add that I think, at least, John, I mean, you're coming from this, but from a big picture standpoint, I envision discussing the general concept in the coalition, but the individual contracts, I think, need to be dealt with on an individual basis. I don't think we should waste the time in the coalition on three different models. I think that would be an individual, as I know they come from that region, too.
But then what's the process of coming up with a contract? Is there any entry in this college available to have this in hand?
Yeah.
And share the costs of drafting the contract?
We are not there yet.
The burden of producing the contracts is... The burden of producing the contracts is on the municipalities, is kind of, we're not asking the, the providers to produce the contracts, we're saying, we will take the lead, the management first, draft the contract.
No, I know, it's...
Or they can share a delivery of the power.
Right, or they're going to also share the cost with us, through the...
We have, we can bring that up in two weeks, and we talk about how we share the cost. But we'll need to answer, the point's going to take.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we'll have that in two weeks, because that's really up to the municipalities, when we get together as a team to discuss the contract.
The coalition, if we suddenly introduce the idea, look, we have to take the lead, what we want, and we're going to be spending legal money on traffic, you know, preparing one, two, or three contracts that we don't have today, we would like it to be a shared cost approach.
Yeah, I mean, yes, they're going to be, they don't know the answer.
Looking at, we're trying to cross bridges here that we're not looking at.
It's a good question. You asked a question earlier, though, the answer is...
It is the bridge that we won't cross, so.
I'm just saying, we're not close to it yet.
Plus, you know, I don't know what it's going to cost, I'm sure, you know, it's such a reasonable fee we get from local providing, right? So it might cost a lot, so.
Any other public comments or questions on, on this idea? Very good, well, thank you. This will be on the agenda for the next meeting. The next up is, again, item number nine, discussion of applications for the zoning hearing board. And Jamie, I believe you're going to walk us through where we are with a couple of pending items, or, yeah, a couple of applications.
Sure. I'm actually going to start with eight thirty-seven and eight thirty-nine thousand link, that is the approval for the Weston Way Sewerage Pump Station to permit the construction of improvements for the grading and electrical pad. The hearing was without any problems, and the zoning hearing board did approve the applicant for that special exception use. As for the application for West Goshen Shopping Center located at 909 Hurley Pike, it was a rather long hearing with a very large turnout from residents, who, many of them became a party to the application. And the zoning hearing board will have to make the recommendation, that they'll make their decision at their next meeting, which will be July 25th, Monday, July 25th. And there was a, there was a great amount of questions from the board and from residents in general, so I really don't have any idea where that will go. But that decision has to be rendered within 45 days, so by July 25th, we will have that decision in order.
So there was like five exceptions they were looking for, right?
There were, there were.
Was there any particular one that was the most concerned with the resident, who was the zoning hearing board?
I will say that, actually, a few hours before the hearing, the applicant did rescind, which was request number, let's see, what was it, number two, to not provide a loading space, and they decided to provide a loading space, or at least rescind that request, and we'll have to provide a loading space. Their plan is not obviously approved by an engineer yet here at the township, so we don't know that that loading space is necessarily where it's going to end up. But they were, they only had four requests at the end of the day by the time the hearing came around. The concerns from residents mostly were about stormwater. And, and as it relates to Goose Creek, the proposal for development, redevelopment is actually not near that portion of the site, and will be something that would be addressed in the land development process. So that was explained to residents, and then the other concerns were for some of the access through the parking lot, and access to the queuing for the drive-through links. And just any of the stacking beyond that queue, that queue length, those drive-through links that's provided. And so that was kind of the most of the conversation. There was not a lot of conversation about the garden center being expanded for, you know, structural use, but more about the fast food, this, kind of the situation, how it's situated on the site, and how it, how the parking that exists then thereafter, and the access to all of that. So it was a lot to think about, and the board, I think, you know, didn't necessarily leave with any kind of an idea of where they were headed.
Was there any follow-up required of the applicant in terms of additional information requested by the zoning hearing board?
No.
So they had all the information?
They had all their information, yeah. And as it relates to the requests from board supervisors, recommendation, so there were two, the Township Fire Marshal would review and approve the plans for clearance blockers, was number one. The second one, related to that loading space, so that is no longer necessary. And then number three was the, having the township engineer review the, the blockers expense that would be proposed for the design. So those will, are still standing, and they would, will be incorporated in the order when that comes through. And then, just to follow up, for July 25th, we did receive a zoning hearing board application that came in this morning, that will be on the agenda, and it is for residential property at 112 Trevor Drive. The requestee merely from the rear yard setback to allow for a new deck and future patio, and so it extends seven feet into the required 15-foot rear yard setback. And that, so that will be, a hearing will be held on Monday, July 25th, for that application.
I'm just hoping to get feedback from neighbors relative to that application.
So I am introducing that for you tonight, and by the July 19th meeting, I will need to hear from the board if you are going to recommend, or, you know, but we will follow the process that we always do, which is we send out the, you know, letting property notices, yeah. And so, you know, if anybody needs to attend that hearing, they'll, you know.
Just trying to remember the, the approval of this little development, yeah. It was approved, and we rezoned the area to allow for this size of property. And it was a lot of issues with the surrounding property is nothing else to me, so there's a lot of need for variances on the class for decks or whatever else. As part of the approval of this, we actually did some rezoning, even if you guys weren't here, I'm not sure, I struggle to remember what it was.
This development is called Goshen One.
Yeah.
And it was for my time, the zoning is the R3C.
Yeah, so the C was what we extended the zoning to, the surrounding neighborhood, to reduce the need for them to keep coming for variances because of form issues. And now here we are with, I don't know, having just built the thing, the first thing we get is not even somebody in the property, and they're asking for a variance on it.
It's the first request.
So, you know, we allowed, the developers squeezed in 12 homes, whatever it is, and it was all meant for that, whatever, but now we've got the need for these extra additions to the properties that causing zoning issues. So I would, I think the zoning cable just needs to be reminded of the history of this process, that's part of their consideration. And again, I'm sorry I don't have the summary, because you only, you only spoke this today, right?
Yeah, and you don't actually need to make any, any kind of...
So for the next meeting, you could get a little bit of a, here's what happened relative to the zoning, this general area, and why it was also, the board was informed that it would help the surrounding neighborhood with not having as many requests for variance for non-conforming uses that they might have been coming up with, so.
I will say that in our current zoning ordinance, the R3, which is more generally our residential, this 15-foot rear yard setback is, is applicable there as well, so I, there's no difference, you know, from my knowledge of not, I have no background on that, and I will provide the research and bring a summary, but it's exactly the same in the R3 as it is in the R3C. So I'm not sure what got modified, you know.
Again, it's somewhere in the record, it's...
Somewhere, something got modified, I'm just not sure what.
Is there any, yeah, that was my question, does the board have any questions relative to either the, what the zoning board already here, or to the West Goshen Shopping Center variances for this Trevor Drive application? Or is it going to hear this one again?
Well, I did reach out to some folks, the latest application, let's see what kind of feedback you need from the folks who all went toward your lane, so, we'll see what they have to say.
Very good, thank you, Jamie. All right, so we're up to your agenda, item number 10. Approval of the bills to be paid for the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. Are there any board questions or comments on the bills? I should add one, Chris, if you don't mind. It's in the invoice list by GL account, page four. Under road maintenance, there's a cost of $1,002.70 for Chesapeake County, for something that related to the sweeper. But then also, further on, on page seven, you have the same cost to Chesapeake County solid waste for a tipping fee, again, for something related to the sweeper. Can you help me understand, if not tonight, as a follow-up, how we differentiate between road maintenance debris that goes to the landfill versus waste and recycling, waste that the sweeper picks up?
Yes.
I don't know any other questions on the bills, are there any other board questions on the bills?
I have one, I have a question, just in my, I'm not sure I understand it, it's on the payment voice list by GL account, page one, the very bottom, the fees, where this East Ocean Township workers' compensation, $15,000. What is that?
Page one, that's probably our workers' comp premium.
About $1,000 to a fire?
Oh, that is our proportionate share to, to East Ocean Township for workers' compensation coverage for, for Goshen Fire Company.
Oh, okay.
With, or by the state statute.
Any other board comments or questions? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion for the house.
Thank you, just a second.
Awesome.
Thank you all. Motion a second, is there any public comment on bills to be paid?
I don't have a holdup right now, but can you look to see where all the Carol engineering bills are, so you can see what I was referring to earlier?
Sure, just give me a minute, Marty. Chris, you may know where they look quicker than me.
I'm looking right at them.
Is it under capital?
It's under prepaid fund 01.
Prepaid fund 01.
So what is your question related to that?
Well, I'm just still trying to understand, if the developer is ultimately paying for those services, Carol Engineering, why are they even, why is that amount coming out of any of our...
Because we are, we are ultimately the client, we're subject to the bill, so we have to pay the bill, and then we seek reimbursement from them. We have a reimbursement agreement, we have reimbursement provisions in our code, we bill them for that, and you should probably see on the treasurer's report, something that says reimbursement for services.
Okay, I'm wondering, does this for next year's budget, if we might be able to have a line item that shows that, because I know when I look at the borough's budget and in other townships, you can see where it'll say $157,000 or $227,000 for reimbursement for professional fees. And I've never been able to see exactly where in our budget that shows all, you know, it's a lot of money that we get reimbursed.
Well, thank you for your question regarding what, the one with the Greystone project earlier, that wouldn't be shown in our budget, because those are direct payments that come out of a separate account. Those don't come out of our general checking, our general bank account. So that, which is the, which is the big amount, but for example, I know we did a bill recently for them, where there was around $40,000 probably in inspection fees, I think. So you wouldn't see, that wouldn't cross through our ledger in any way, shape, or form, because that's a direct, that's a separate escrow agreement that was set off.
But maybe Christine could, if we don't mind, let's take an action, Christine, to be able to point out where in the budget these reimbursements come back in to the township. In terms of trying to match it all up, I mean, I don't know whether, you know, what Goshen Ward, but we know what projects that we budgeted 23 are going to come through to be, to be supported, so it's kind of, it's too much detail for what we actually know.
To be perfectly honest with you, it'd be completely unnecessary, because it's generally a wash, it's a one-for-one in and out. It would be completely unnecessary. I've never, in 14 years, I've never budgeted for professional reimbursement costs.
It just shows up, we don't have in the budget, it shows up on the actual monthly treasurer's report.
Correct.
Yeah. It's like budgeting for real estate sales, we don't know what's being handled, so.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Does who made fund 01, Pico Energy, and I realize it's $93, but it says Henderson Lights, is that Henderson High School?
You say yes, but I will check on that.
I saw the Dallas Borough.
Yeah, we talked about that thing with that one.
The boundary line is right down the middle of the high school.
Yeah. I'll check on that.
Home room in the borough, it signs that's in West Goshen.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We have a motion a second, we're going to take the vote, all in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay. Motion passes by, it's here. So Marty, we, we did not complete public comment earlier in the evening, is there anything you might bring up that was not on the agenda this evening?
Yeah, I guess just something to your attention, and it might not affect anything, but when, the different one recently unveiled in RLD of Greystone, when their representative was here at last month's meeting, and the board approved page four, I was looking for the approved plans to be recorded, of which they were, but they were actually recorded by Geracian and not RLD. And I don't know if that makes a little bit of a difference, but I guess as far as escrow payments or any kind of land development agreements, do we have something on file? Or we have a contract in any way with Geracian for page four?
I have no, I don't have to answer the question, Chris, or would you be any familiarity with Marty's question?
Geracian was the original land owner, so they would have to sign the plans, correct?
Yes.
Well, that's just at the agreement, from what I can read in bond filings and places where I researched, is Resor Land Development had a, an agreement, an option to buy phase two. So, so far, to date, Resor has not purchased phase two, which is actually phase four, what you approved the other night. So, Resor, what Resor owns right now is very little of the property over there. Geracian still owns what's going to be all public park space. Resor owns a little bit of open space and these little red squares, the rest is still all belongs and is owned by Geracian. So I just wanted to point that out.
And it could be, it could be some kind of an agreement between Resor and Geracian, subject to approvals.
I'll probably go to say something I'm not really familiar with, but there's private editors, isn't the issue between them, as to who's owning what at this point?
Well, the township still needs escrow money for the...
But we have escrow money.
Okay.
Generally speaking, the individual who records a document, who actually walks it into the recorder's office, it's irrelevant who that is, what matters is what's written on the face of the document. So anyone can bring a document in to be recorded, it has to be signed by the actual land owners or the parties at interest in the matter that's being reported. So that, another entity recorded it for someone else, is not a big deal, what controls, what's actually written on the document that's been recorded.
Okay, thanks, Marty, any other questions?
Could you just give an update on lease contracts?
Yes, so this, the lease contract expires at the end of this year, and the... Yes, so the lease contract expires at the end of this year and the police union and township board supervisors, two of us will be holding our first conversation with the collective bargaining unit this week.
And when does that need to be agreed upon?
So the timeline for the agreement is, hopefully we can come to a negotiated agreement before the end of the year. Obviously that would be then in place for the end of the contract year. If parties don't believe we're going to come to an end, could reach an agreement, then either party, I believe, either party can file for, by the end of September, has to file for the arbitration process. They can continue to negotiate while that process gets arranged, but it's really, this is specific requirements that set those deadlines.
Yeah. Okay, I was looking, yeah, I was looking and interested in timelines because I believe, my opinion, that that was a failure with the previous contract was certain timelines weren't met. So I just wanted to make sure those are going to be met this time around.
All working on it.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Any other questions? Get ready to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of adjournment? Oh, and a motion. Do you have a motion? Thank you. I'll have to give you the second. Thank you all. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I think the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Yes, Tina has it. Passing it down.